Good evening, thank you all for coming tonight. I'd like to start our special meeting of the Board of Finance on this Tuesday, April 16th. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, I think we all know why we're here tonight. We had a referendum on April 11th. The results of that referendum were that the Board of Ed and the capital accounts passed. That was our positive, happy about that. Unfortunately, the town side of the budget failed, and it failed by 23 votes. We would have liked to have had, I think, greater participation turnout. But while 23 is not a clear mandate to go crazy, I think we must be responsive to the 2,651 folks who did come out to vote. And so I think that means we need to relook the town budget. I would recommend that when we do so, we kind of use three guiding principles. Those guiding principles would be to maintain safety, to maintain the infrastructure, in other words, don't create tomorrow's problem today. And third, I would recommend that we maintain our fiscal discipline around short-term debt and capital non-recurring. As we saw in this budget, no single move creates better dividends for Bethel than that approach. If we stay faithful to the three-year plan that this board has put in place, we'll continue to have benefits, like we did this year, $570,000 from our plan of short-term debt. So, we've got to begin to consider the town budget. We have a new development. Many of you who've been around for a while know that the Bethel High School was renovated a number of years ago. Many of you may also know that it's been underwired for a while by the state. The initial approach, according to the state, was that we owed them $373,000. We maintain a risk and opportunity list, which helps us track kind of all the issues that are surrounding the town. Much like air traffic control tries to keep an eye on all R&amp;Ds. That item had been on the risk list forever. Yesterday morning, I got a call from Dr. Carver saying we've got good news, that the risk of 370 had become an opportunity. I believe that Dr. Carver won that concession because the state legislators just don't want to see you anymore. But look, it's great news. It dates back a long time, and we don't have, hopefully, a desire to go into all the history time. But what I would like to do is to turn it over to Bob Keslovsky, the town comptroller, to give us a little bit of history, and then perhaps give us a recommendation as to what to do with this item.
Okay. So, Bob, as you said, there was a risk of $370,000 and change back probably early January or so. We knew that we were going to protest it. We talked to the state, actually Terry and Dr. Carver spoke to DAS, and the whole issue was dealing with the architects. Back then, the architects that we used, also the Berry School, and then they came over to do our school, but at the same time, the preliminary work that they did, there was bidding on it. But back then, in that timeframe, there was no requirement for professional services to be bid. You're talking about 2005, 2006 timeframe. It took the state a while after the audit was complete, after the school was completed, for them to come down and start to do the audit. So, net effect is, they accepted the fact that there didn't need to be any professional services bidding on those contracts. They accepted the architect at the time. And so, that 370 turned into an opportunity, as Bob had mentioned, of 287-881, which it looks like the state will return to the town of Bethel. The woman was out of...
287-881?
881, yeah. So, the woman that was reviewing the files was going to look at it yesterday or early this week, because she was away on vacation last week. We were told that she was coming back yesterday. She's going to look at it, she gives a blessing to it, then sometime in the next whenever, we're going to receive a check for that amount of money and close out the audit at that point. So, I think the most sensible choice is to use that money to pay down the short-term debt. So, the $650,000 that we have allocated, reduce that by $285,000 and apply it to that account. And so, that frees up $285,000 in the town budget. So that, we will still make the $650,000 payment in July, but we will use these funds instead of using town funds at that point.
And Bob, I'm sorry, 285 just to round it down?
285, to round it down, I mean, you want to use 287-881, you can, but, you know, you start to deal with odd numbers there, too. So, I would say 285 at this point.
And what's the timeframe for receiving these funds?
It's the state, so you have no idea. I mean, we could get it before the end of fiscal year '20. I don't think so, I think we're going to get it sooner.
So, we'll probably get it in this year '20, more likely.
Well, maybe, you know, we possibly could get it this year, too. Yeah. But then we would just apply to...
Okay. That's great news. Thank you, Dr. Carver.
Terry did a lot of the work, too.
Constant advocates.
Well, actually, Terry and Dr. Carver did a lot, but Brad did a lot of...
Yes.
Because the original assessment was a little over a million dollars, and he found that most of the adjustments that the auditor was taking was still on state bid. And on state bid, they should be acceptable, and he did accept them after Brad gave him the information.
All right. Well, thank you, Brad. All right, then. To comply with our Roberts rules, I will make a motion for purposes of discussion that we adjust Department 440, line 638, by 285, and the new balance would become, well, I guess we'll do the new balance later.
365.
365.
We can do it as far as that one motion. I'll second that.
Discussion. So, 440, Department Debt Services, line 638, general obligation, ban principle, bring it down by 285. Yeah, look under 440. It should then, when you pull up expenses? I brought the paper from the town meeting, but it should be the same. So, bring our total down to somewhere below 5 million, right? 219, 133, less 285. I get, Brad, let me check my math, I get 4,934,133. Correct. So, that would be the Department 440 total. Line item, again, just, the line 638 would go to 365.
What's the new total of?
So, that was part of the motion for the reduction, and then the new line item.
So, any discussion of the joint motion as to the line total and the department total?
So, I just want to clarify that amount, that money that we're going to get would be to pay down short-term or long-term debt?
Short-term.
Okay.
It's a good question, right, but the high school debt is fixed, so we can't...
Yeah, you can't touch long-term debt. Once it's fixed, it's fixed for the period of time that you bond the note.
Okay.
There's no prepayments, unless you call the bond, you have to pay it as it's prescribed.
Any discussion, or do we want to vote? A little question?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, don't need to repeat, you already know about it.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous. All right, that's the first piece of business today. I think, again, we need to continue to work on the town budget, and we'll do it by maybe just going down the line, see what folks have as far as ideas. We'll break with recent tradition, so you can be either sigh of relief, and rather than starting all the way down the end of the table, I'll start with Robert to my right.
Thank you. So, it was an interesting election. Obviously gratifying that the school budget passed and the capital budget passed. The town operating, very close, I think it was 23 votes, and that's obviously a signal that we need to think again about our town operating budget. And I have given this a lot of thought myself, and think that if we can get the town operating budget down by $100,000, down to about 4.64%, we'll have a good basis to go back to the town for a reconsidered vote. So, what I'd like to do is put together a motion, but before I do that, I want to share with the board the areas that I have identified that I think we can adjust downwards in order to come up with a $100,000 reduction in the overall town operating budget.
And Rob, just for point of clarity, the reduction that you're talking about, down to 4.64, does not reflect the downward adjustment?
Oh, that's right. That's only, that's town operating less school, less debt service.
So, at the end, Brad, you'll walk us through all the pieces?
Yeah. So, just very quickly, and then we'll come back, and I'd like to make a motion for these parts, but I just lay out my thoughts first, is from 230, Public Works, contracted services, like to reduce that by $5,000. So, right now, we stand at 49,637, and take that down to 44,637. Highway Department, 240, again, contracted services, reduce the contracted services 313 from 123.2 down to 118.2. Building, 260, building maintenance, reduce 313 contracted services by $5,000. That would change the current amount of 276,840 down to 271,840. We have some discussion with the police department, and our police are willing to reconsider some overtime in the budget. So, the proposal is to reduce Police Department 360 salaries, which is 101, by $25,000. So, that would take the current budget of 4,293,97 down to 4,265,397.
I'm sorry, say it one more time, 4 million?
4 million, it's at 4,290,397, 4,290,397, down to 4,265,0397.
And that's the line, not the total?
That's correct.
So, the total goes to 46...
Would go to 4694.
263, correct.
I can give you the account totals, but I'm throwing enough numbers out there right now, so... Parks and Recreation, 380. Two lines, line 206, which is maintenance and supplies, the proposal there is to reduce maintenance supplies by $10,000, which will take the current 123,629 down to 113,629. Programs, which is 216, and it's currently at 47,191, reduce that by $15,000. I'm sorry, it's currently at 502,191, reduce it by $15,000, we'll take it down to 47,191. Senior Center, 430, Activities, line item 317, reduce that by $5,000. So, it's currently at $60,000, reduce that to $55,000. And lastly, 460, Building Maintenance and Education, take down Account 207, Maintenance and Repairs, by $30,000. So, it's currently at $480,000, that would be reduced to $450,000. So, that takes the town operating budget, less school and maintenance, down by 70. Total BOE maintenance would put down by 30, so that comes up to $100,000. So, the town operating budget would come down to 31,861.3, which means the total reduction is $2,324,801. So, based on that, I'd like to make a motion. The first motion is to reduce the Public Works 230, Contracted Services 313, by $5,000.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Are we going to, what was that, say that again, what was the motion, for which account?
It's the account, Public Works 230, Contracted Services 313, by $5,000.
My comment is that I thought we were all unable to kind of discuss our thoughts on the budget, and we haven't, like we had in the past. If this is the way, if this is the way you guys want to proceed, then, you know, if that's the way we can proceed, you know, I still feel very strongly about, rather than reducing services and accounts, we could reduce capital non-recurring. If you reduce capital non-recurring, let's say the total was 150,000, that's including the 30,000, you're talking about a $3,000 saving interest next year.
How are we talking about this when it comes down to...
I understand, but we're going into motions. All I'm trying to say is, we're going into motions toward a cut, and we haven't even discussed what our thoughts were on the referendum. I mean, look, I know you guys have the votes, and if this is the way it's going to go, it's going to go. I'm just saying, every meeting prior to this, we've all kind of discussed where we're at, then we got into this.
We weighed in.
I'm just saying, if that's not the way we're going to do it, that's fine, let's just go motion by motion.
Okay.
And again, I know that you've discussed CNR and cuts there. Did you have other cuts and other things in mind, though?
The police department was one of them. I had looked at that, that was roughly $25,000, so...
From which account?
Wichita.
From the overtime account. The salaries.
Mr. Chairman, if we do these motions, we're voting on motions prior to perhaps someone else having some other idea, unless, of course, you've decided this in advance, because maybe somebody has another idea. So, we're voting on motions without knowing what other motion may be down the road, because we discussed it. So, I mean, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, I just...
Well, any additional motions can be made anyway.
Exactly.
I mean, there's no limit to the number of motions.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, as far as discussion of motions.
Yeah, my thought was that, again, the turnout wasn't what we had hoped it would today. Budget went down by 23, but I think we have to be responsive to the folks who did vote. And that means we have to relook the budget, and what we're doing now is just a way of looking at the budget. If somebody disagrees with the motion, then disagree with the motion. And we come to you, come up, you will have the floor at that time, and give us your thoughts now.
Well, I did wanted to say outright that the 23 votes is not as small a margin as you'd think, because there were 50 votes that did not vote at all on the town, that voted on the school budget. And, you know, the second referendum is a lot different than the first referendum. So, just going into that, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
I personally still feel that capital non-recurring is the way to go. You know, we talked about services, and I said 150,000, it cost the town $3,000 actually.
Well, let's talk about that when it comes to, because that's not the right number. It's, I think you're missing the second part, but we'll have a more full discussion.
I have this discussion to say about what Robert proposed, that, you know, these are maintenance accounts, they're program accounts, and contracted services. And my understanding of that contracted services is that we're always out there, it's always asking for, to have that complete, not touch, because it goes over sometimes, and we don't know what we're going to have to contract. And as far as these services, you know, this to me just makes me really feel that they're really, the two Bethels are becoming more discreet as time moves on, because you're cutting programs for part of the population that has, you know, not all doing with the schools. And I just think it's, I mean, I would be one to cut programs if we were making cuts and it was like a really massive thing, but I think there are ways to do it.
Please, women, make comments to the motion.
But it is the motion, it's discussing...
No, he doesn't, he's going one account at a time. So, I'm sorry, Robert, what account are you on?
Okay, so I should, okay.
Public Works Contracted Services.
I got you, I got it.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion, we have it seconded. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Vote on the motion to reduce Department 230, line item 313, by $5,000. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I guess we'll need to then do a motion on the total, Brad?
Yes.
So, the...
The total, 327,47, Brad?
327,487.
So, I'm, my motion is to reduce the account total of Department 230 Public Works by $5,000 to 327,487.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Okay, not hearing any. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
The next area that I'd like to make a motion to is the Highway Department, 240, and again, Contracted Services, which is 313, and the motion is to reduce the Contracted Services by $5,000, which would make the recommendation 118,200.
I'll second.
Motion, second, discussion. Not hearing any discussion, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Brad, would you confirm my math, please?
Sure.
The account total for Highway Department would become 2,88,118.
Correct.
So, the motion here is to reduce the Highway Department account total by $5,000 to 2,88,118.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, discussion. Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The next department, which I have a recommendation to adjust, is the Building Maintenance Department, 260, and again, Contracted Services, and the reduction of the Contracted Services would be by $5,000. So, that would take the total that we have recommended right now from 276,840 down to 271,840.
I'll second that. Do you have the line item for that?
313.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, discussion. Okay, not hearing any discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And Brad, again, my account total is 754,852.
Correct.
So, I make a motion to reduce the account total of Account 260, Building Maintenance, to 754,852.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, discussion. Not hearing any discussion on the total?
Is that the, oh, is the total of...
260.
Okay.
All those in favor of, excuse me, I'm sorry. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
My next recommendation is to reduce the Police Department account, specifically Account 101, which is salaries, and the amount we have is $25,000, which represents overtime. So, the amount reduction would be from the current 4,290,397 down to 4,265,397.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, discussion. All those, all right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And the total, again, Brad, for the account total, I have 4,694,263.
Correct.
So, I make a motion to amend the Account 360 down to 4,694,263.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, discussion of the motion.
I'm just having a hard time hearing the number of the account. Did you say 360?
Yes.
Did you say the name of the account, too?
Certainly, Police Department.
All right, so it's a total, I'm assuming there's no discussion, but all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All right? All those opposed?
The next area I'm making a recommendation to reduce are two different line items within 380, Parks and Recreation. The first is line item 206, Maintenance and Supplies, the reduction there is $10,000.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, and we have it seconded, any discussion?
I'd like to discuss that, if you have mine. You know, when we had that department was here last time, she, when we had discussion about the money, she offered $9,600 that we could cut from her budget. And honestly, if you talk about services and you're talking about maintenance and supplies, I don't think it's fair. I don't, and I would be the last one to say, is I'm going to, I'm against all the motions to cut the next three things because of that, because I think that we're focusing on the wrong thing. I agree about, with Brian about this, CNR, but we'll discuss that later. But I just think it's wrong, because, especially because Eileen offered $9,600 that we voted on and we cut. So, I think it's wrong.
Any more discussion of the motion?
I'm going to vote against it, too, based on Eileen, you know, I believe I asked for $2,500 for fertilizing, and she gave us $9,000 because she made a plea that she didn't want her materials cut, so I'm going to vote against this motion.
Any more discussion? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of the motion... All right, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes.
The other line item within Parks and Recreation, 380, is, has to do with the programs. And the motion is to reduce the total amount for programs by 15,000. So that would reduce the current budget of 502,191, to 487,191.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, discussion.
I also think this is wrong, and I'll tell you why. Because when we were discussing these programs, it was said very, very clearly and emphatically that these programs make money. And that they do, do more than break even, they make money. And I think that you, I think you're focusing on cutting, I would consider that a service, it's not, you know, an ambulance. But, you know, this is a certain sector of what, of the town that you're cutting. I think it's, I just think it's wrong. I think we need to focus on another area.
I, I think we're all, you know, we've looked forth a budget which we thought was good and protected these services, but the town voted them down.
This is, okay.
So, so that, that voted them down.
Fair enough.
So that means the town operating budget was too high.
Right.
So we have to be, look at a very, I mean, no one wants to do this, at least I don't want to do it. But this is what we have to do in order to-
I just have a different idea of where, that's all.
And we'll get to that, those ideas.
Right, I understand that, I understand that, I'm just focused on this. And I also want to say that two years in a row, the minority voice told you that these budgets were gonna fail. And, you know, and they went through, so that's all I'm gonna say, that, you know, this isn't my first rodeo.
Right.
Carry on.
Can I just ask what the impact, because when we had discussed this, because I remember I asked, you know, it's now the time to do your programs. And it was explained to me that it had a positive effect on the mill rate. Cutting to 15,000, what does that do, Bob, in terms of?
Depends which program she cuts. I don't know which one she, she has a higher profit percentage on, as opposed to others, I have no idea.
Well, Bob, maybe ask differently, are you planning on changing the estimate of the revenue?
No.
Can we ask, I think, to the audience if she thinks it's gonna change her revenue?
Well, I would think that I would have to try to, so it doesn't change the revenue, which means I would have to either try to find sponsors or some other way of covering that lack of, of income that a program would generate that we would wanna cut, have to cut. Or we would have to revisit and may have to cut a program that maybe not a lot of people have taken, but a small population has, would like it as a service. So, you know, I, I think people forget that Park and Rec is a big service. It's a service department. We provide service, we provide economic programs and services. And I'm kinda disappointed about the way it's being handled, but that's just me.
Am I, can I say something, or am I not allowed to say anything?
We don't have public-
No, okay.
Any more discussions? Uh, we have a motion on the floor, it's seconded, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes, five to two.
So again, Brad, please check my math, that would change the account total for 380 Parks and Recreation to 1,477,997.
Correct.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, and since it's a total, I'm assuming we don't do any further discussion, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right, opposed?
The next department that I would like to propose an adjustment for is 430 Senior Center. And again, this would have to be the Activities Group, which is line item 317. Which the current recommendation is at $60,000, we would like to reduce that by $5,000 to $55,000.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, discussion.
You know, again, I remember discussing this at the last meeting, and when we cut to 20,000, I remember we said we were gonna have to readjust because it was gonna affect the mill rate, and we said we would do that at a later date. So, the adjustment is actually another cut of $5,000 from the seniors who already took a $20,000 cut in their program. Again, I'll wait for it to be my turn to make a motion, I respect the process. But again, I think that to take this much from the seniors who already gave up $20,000, and there's other places that, you know, I feel strongly about, and I'll get outvoted, and that's fine, I understand the way it works. I just am gonna say, we've already cut 20,000, I, I don't think it's fair to take another 5,000 from the seniors, especially the people who are at least able to pay. You know, if this thing comes, but again, that's it.
And I would just add that, I mean, this is almost like history being made for Brian and I to be, you know, fighting these cuts. Um, I, I fought that band tooth and nail, I had, you know, that, that was a big expense. But when you think of, but that was voted in, and that's fine, I saw it drive around tapes, lovely, really. It's that nice lettering, um, looks very spacious. But th- these are seniors who, this is where they go to have activities or whatever, and either low cost or free activities. So, it just seems like Bethel, it's just getting more lopsided as we move along this process. And I would oppose this, absolutely.
So, Cynthia, one of the things that I'm kinda confounded with is every one of these budgets, when we proposed them a number of weeks ago, you opposed.
I did, you're absolutely right.
Because they were too low then?
No, because if we were trying to work it down, my dream was to get this down to 3%, I know that was not gonna happen. We were gonna make other cuts too. So yes, I did support that at that time. I don't support it out of context of just jumping in and doing that the first thing, we're voting on those cuts. Rather than, you know, seeing what other areas, that's all. It's not that I've, I've changed my mind about, you know, conservative spending or fiscal austerity. You know, it's just that as it goes forward, it just seems a little lopsided today, because that's where you're focusing, that's all.
For me, you know, if you're gonna ask the question, maybe, you know, I always try and approach these budgets with an open mind. And when it was a motion I had made to cut, I think it was a quarter percent, whatever it was across the board. And, you know what, I listened to the department heads, and the department heads told me, and a couple of them made a very good case that, hey, Brian, that's not fair. We came in at 0%, you know, we came in at half a percent, you shouldn't be cutting us. So I listened. Being conservative doesn't mean you shut your ears off to people. You know, I remember when we were talking about putting the social service in, I was the only person at that time who supported it and was able to sway three board members to vote with me and make it a full-time position. My point is, is we just have philosophical differences in where we think these cuts should be made. Do I believe that cut should be made? Absolutely. In a perfect world, I think if we cut it down by 250,000, we would probably have a good chance of it passing. Is it gonna pass? I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball, I never, it tells me what's a good thing. But, remember, some of the changes come from listening. The Senior Center spoke, we discussed it, I was told that there was an issue with the mill rate calculation in it, so I listened. So, I think it's a good thing when people change their opinions, it means they're listen, listening and they're open to ideas. That's what I understand.
Sure, and, and Brian, you sat in that chair when we went through six hours of meetings. And before we began those six hours of meetings, you said that respectfully, you were going to vote no on every line item, every budget discussion we had. And you, you were very, you carried through on that, you voted no across. I fail to see how open-minded that was.
Because I didn't agree with the number we were trying to get to. If we had agreed on a number that I felt plausible. And, you know what, last time people voted yes for some budgets and no for other budgets. Crucified for, how could you vote yes for this budget and then vote the whole budget down? So, you know, I do listen. So, I explained myself that night, people asked me about my position and they understood it. Even the chairman said he understood where I was going. So, now's not the time to reflect and say, why did you vote this way, why did you vote that way? We either come up with a number tonight, well, we're gonna come up with a number tonight. So, go on with the motions and let's go.
Okay, any more discussion? And we have a motion on the floor, we have it seconded, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Five to two carries.
And one last motion, and that has to do with Building Maintenance Education, 460. Specifically line item 207, Maintenance and Repairs. And the motion is to reduce the current amount of 480 by $30,000 down to 450. Oh, I don't, do we do the account totals on the senior?
Excuse me?
No.
Oh, okay, let's move back and move to the top. Uh, the account totals on the se, on the Senior Center, I have a 224,112.
Yes.
So I moved to reduce the 430 Senior Center down to 224,112.
I'll second your motion.
It's a, it's a total, so we really don't need any discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, and then to repeat, the reduction of $30,000 in 460 Building Maintenance and Education, line item 207 Maintenance and Repairs.
And, and to be clear, right, on our schedule, we only see the 207 account. I believe there are three accounts in there.
Correct.
And we, I don't know if we need to identify a specific line item, but if we were, I believe the, the line item would be the 406.
406.
406, correct.
Yeah, we don't see that on our sheets, but I guess for-
We changed that last year to make it one line item, to give the board of that a little more flexibility with, if their contracted comes in lower, they do more maintenance. It was just a internal thing, operationally, to give them a little more flexibility on what they need the most.
So, what's our, has a technical matter, do we need to identify a line item, or do we just?
Just add a 207, 5207.
Okay, that does it in any way?
It gives them the flexibility to make that cut where they see better.
I'm sorry, Robert, one more time, the, the motion, please.
So 5207 Maintenance and Repairs, reduce it from 480 to 450, a reduction of $30,000.
I seconded it, seconded it.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, discussion.
I mean, you kinda discussed it at the last meeting, I mean, do you feel you'll be able to adequately keep things going?
Well, it, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna defer things that we had planned to do this year. So, we have to do, I think I said this last time, we have to do all of the safety and code pieces that are, that are part of that 406. But there are other things that we've been putting off for years that need to get taken care of, it's gonna, I mean, it's being pushed off more.
What, what are those things? I mean, what was it?
The, the middle school gym floor needs to be refinished, it hasn't been in years. Um, and we, we did the high school a year or two ago. These are just examples that, uh, so I'm not making any final judgment now. Duck cleaning at the middle school, replacing carpet at Berry School that's worn. Um, so it's gonna, it's going to defer that.
Now, that's, two of those things sound like safety issues to me, like the duck cleaning and the carpeting.
The, the duck cleaning, to me, is more of a safety issue because it does, yeah, it, it can cause mold and things to grow. So we've been, we've been steadily doing it over the past couple of years. Uh, but, and the carpet is, I wouldn't say it's safety in the sense of, correct me if I'm wrong, that where people could trip. But it's, it's definitely getting worn down.
Correct.
Those are just examples.
More of a proactive approach to it.
Yes, and then some, there, there are some other things too.
In, in your mind, is that, can they defer without any, I mean, I don't, I mean, yeah, I'm gonna say, yeah.
The code compliant items, we're gonna have to do.
We have to do, the, the fire panel, bleachers, things like that, that has to be done.
Does this reduction affect that?
No.
Close.
Close to it, though, if anything else happened, it would.
And nothing stops you off from coming back to the board. Should something happen, that's unexpected. Okay, any more discussion of the motion? We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any comments? So we gotta do the, we have to do the total?
So, for town operating, less school maintenance and debt, I have 26,191,910. Is that close?
Well, you're still doing the 460 account, right?
Okay, so total for the 460.
Oh, all I have is that, that is, that is the total.
Yeah, right.
Right?
So then that's all your motions that you have? You have some other questions?
Do we need a, a motion on the total town operating budget this time?
Uh, no, you'll need that before you guys adjourn for the night.
Okay.
Before we adjourn.
So, so I yield my discussions. You know, I'm sorry, Brad, do we need to do, you know, total on the?
I don't think, I don't think we usually do it on the 450, I think you make one motion, uh, so I'm sure it's fine.
All right. Yes, Claudia?
I think we need to stay the course on our capital non-recurring, we're making slow steady progress on coming down our short-term debt. And that is going to keep us into it still when we have more long-term debt coming on for the schools and when the next recession is going to hit us at some point in time. That's what I have to say.
Cynthia?
Well, I have two things that I wanted to ask about, um, before I make any motions. And one is, I just cannot get that highway sand out of my mind. So, I called Milford and I called Newtown, and I wanted to know what they use on their roads and, and they, and how many miles of road they have. And in New Milford, they use 100% salt and treated salt. They have 212 miles of lane road. And in Newtown, they use one-to-one park sand, salt and sand, and they have 279 miles of road. So the thing that I keep coming up against in my mind is, why wouldn't, I, I mean, it's a 61% increase and it's a little bit mind-boggling to me. And it makes me say to myself, um, why wouldn't you consider using more salt even temporarily and changing the mix so you can stretch the sand out for two years? I mean, call me a Pollyanna, but it just seems like a logical thing. So I would like to, should I talk about my other thing, or should I make one motion at a time? Because I have two motions. Should we discuss this?
Either way, you can do it like Robert, do them all up.
Yeah, I got a lot of sand on the floor. All right.
How'd you do your sand?
Yeah, let's do that motion right now, and I'm just trying to find the line item, I can't, uh, it's in, here we go.
240, 209.
240. And, and I also, my question is, while I'm making this motion, is if you contract that a year in advance and it's increased by 61%, one would say, wow, that's a lot, maybe I shouldn't contract this, like, right now. Or maybe, you know, it's like, to try to find a substitute, my computer is very slow. So I'll just say to that, um, what's the salt and sand, the subcategory?
209.
Okay, 209.
It's just sand, it's separate from salt.
240, yeah, we're trying to look at it, it's not opening up, spinning. Yeah, I know, but I was just saying my second. Yeah, okay, Cynthia. Okay, I would like to make a motion to reduce Account 240, 209, Salt, Snow and Ice Sand by $10,000.
I'll second for discussion. Discussion?
So what was, what was the reason for going up so much again? I don't remember that.
Oh, it was, I lost it, that was the, that was the-
Oh, the lowest bid, that was the, that was the increased total up to our lowest bid price that we got in. There was, the salt, the sand coming from different areas around this area. This year it's out, it was coming from Southbury, the other side of Southbury, transportation costs, and the cost of, sand is getting a little more diff, decent sand's getting a little more difficult to find, and then, and people buy pieces of property or not, and are unable to dig into it to get the material out of it. But I think a lot, the majority of costs is where, is where the yard was located this year. We've had it come as close as, in Danbury, where the price was reflected in fuel costs.
In terms of cost, I mean, well, salt is cheaper. There is a controversy, but the jury's out. I did speak to our public works director. He did say that it was something to consider for the future, but I feel the future is now. And I think that for all the disadvantages, I don't think there are any more disadvantages to salt than sand. Some people feel strongly one way or the other, but I think that in terms of prices like that, in terms of, you know, all the development that's going on that probably is affecting areas where you can get sand, you know, there's, you know, a lot of building. So, that's why I'm...
If you go back, if you could probably go back several years, probably several years, seven, eight years, you'll find that we were paying eighteen dollars and change, nineteen dollars a ton for salt versus the fourteen, fifteen, thirty, or so.
Well, it's cheaper with sand right now.
I mean, I'm referring to the sand.
Oh, okay, yes.
So, sand wasn't always that fourteen dollars a yard.
I know. I see every year, we have four years of history.
Yeah.
So, it's great.
So, Bob, I have a question for you. If, if the motion were to carry and you had to reduce your budget for the sand by thirty thousand dollars, would that actually mean you would only be able to purchase less sand?
Yes.
No, go ahead.
Bob, you, I remember we talked about this years ago, and I think the reasoning for sticking with sand was because of the amount of hills that we have in town and that the salt doesn't give proper, am I correct?
Yes.
That's what...
Yes, I mean, if, if you want me to, if, if, if you want me to spend a couple minutes...
No, I would...
Yes, yes, please, Bob.
You know, if, a few of the things, you know, before we get into meat, potatoes of the whole thing, you know, the, the, the salt, the salt usage has come up, and there's been changes over the past several years to go more towards salt without the sand in, okay? But before, before I get into, let me say, let me just say, just make this one statement. You know, we, we all have a voice, okay? And I'll leave what I want to talk about into this. We all as society have a voice of, of how we move forward, okay? But there's, there's another side of the world, the natural world, of the woodlands and streams, lakes and ponds and so forth, and the things that exist there don't have a voice. And one of the things we're responsible for is to make sure they exist as well. That being said, okay, the monochloride use, if we were to say we're just gonna, we're gonna remove the sand, the same exact amount of salt, that experiment has failed miserably around here in most DOTs. The amount of salt, the application rate of salt is gonna increase quite a bit. So, you're probably not gonna see that much, financially, you're not gonna really see a big difference. So, say, for example, we use a thousand ton of salt during the course of the winter. You're probably gonna see that go to seventeen, eighteen hundred ton of salt, and that's in your application rate. So, right now, we apply it like seven hundred pounds per mile. We're gonna get up into thirteen, fourteen hundred pounds per mile per application, and our application frequency is also gonna increase also. So, not only gonna see an increase in your salt total that you're gonna use, but you're also gonna see a pretty good increase in your overtime account also to go along with that. And that's in order to keep the roads attempted to be melted off without using the sand, which is, as Mr. Turgeon has stated, the amount of hills we have, roads there, what I consider more than eleven or twelve percent. And the sand also keeps the snow milled in what we call milled-up condition, so we can allow our materials to work a little bit longer on the roads, right? So, our overtime, our, our time on the road cost has gone down, and it's easier for us to remove the snow at the end of the storm.
Okay, if I may, so there's, I, you know, the research that I've done also makes a case that sand is not necessarily great for, you know, creatures.
Agreeable.
Right. So, I'm not saying go all salt, I'm saying, you know, more salt, that's all, just a mixture. And in fact, I'm not even telling you what to do. I'm just saying that the sixty-one percent shocks me, not...
See, there's, so let me, let me go a little bit further. Back in the sixties, there was the Salt Institute, which came about, okay? So, the Salt Institute was an arm of salt manufacturers, the mining companies, all right? So, they were, they were promoting the use of salt and get, you know, get rid of sand. And there's been, and there's a lot of misinformation around that if you dig down into it, there was, when statements were made, there was, there was sentences removed from statements and so on and so forth to make one product look better than the other. Now, our, now, when I check our sand, one of the issues, one of the issues that Cynthia is referring to is what we call turbidity in our streams, which you see a stream that has a muddy look to it, and that, and that's fines that are floating in the stream, right? Okay? That turbidity is a product of the sand production. So, when I check our sand, I check what percentage I have of turbidity. Now, my sand runs less than five percent turbidity, which is silts that are in the product. So, that amount of silt is very, very low to what goes into our local waters.
Well, on behalf of all the Jefferson salmon, there's, I say thank you.
The thing is...
I withdraw your motion.
Right, let me just be, let me just go a little bit.
No, no, please, okay, we can talk highly when I'm on the paper with you, Brian. I'm gonna withdraw my motion. I withdraw my motion.
But Bob, I'd like you to finish what you were saying, because I think there's been a big conversation around you, and I'd like to hear the rest of it.
Sure is. Right, because, you know, really, we're one of the, one of the ones out there that's not using, we're one of the ones that's using salt, and we're seeing mix, and a lot of towns have gone to straight salt, without taking into account to all the other issues that have come along with it, okay? So, the chlorine concentration just in straight salt, just in pure white salt that's occurring is out of control. If you go around and look at towns after snows from it, see what the roads look like and how much salt's laying outside, that, that has to go someplace, right? And that has to go someplace, that's chlorine. That goes into your local waterways. So, what'll happen in your local waterways is all the like that's in there, what we do, what they do is they, they check the streams in a manner of conductivity, right? So, conductivity relates to chlor, to chloride concentrations in streams. Those numbers are off the charts. UConn and CCSU has been running some stream conductivity studies around the state, and the salt usage is off the charts. I'm sure it's a matter of only a few more years where deep gets involved in this and makes, and makes, some people make some really, really difficult choices, and I don't want to put the town of Bethel in that, in that spot, okay? So, then you'll hear people who use treated salt, all right? So, the treated salt comes in a whole bunch of different ways. There's, there's, a myriad of things out there. There's beet juice, there's, there's...
Molasses.
There's molasses, there's everything, there's, you know, you name it, it's out there, right?
Bob, I'm sorry, beet, beet juice.
Beet juice, right. So, what they're trying to do is to make the salt more sticky so it doesn't bounce off the road, okay? But within that beet juice or, 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 we have Sears Chemical Cell, a product called Magic Go, I'm sure you heard of the word magic salt. To town, if you talk to town, Newtown, I think they use Clearling from Carano, which is a green salt, am I correct? Those, those materials contain calcium chloride and magnesium chloride, and a magnesium chloride and calcium chloride releases two chloride ions versus sodium chloride, which only releases one, okay? So, it's double chloride release into, onto your roadways and into your environment. It provides you a little bit of slightly lower temperature, functioning temperature of your materials, okay? But, the companies that provide the materials that are mixed with the meth chloride and calcium chloride to enhance the salt, okay, they're called enhanced organic compounds. They're proprietary chemicals, so, so the man, the chemical manufacturer doesn't, can't, is not responsible for telling you what those things are. But, when they, when they go through a science lab, we can pick out certain things and parts per million. So, the things we pick out that we're spraying on our roads when we're using an organically enhanced salt product are cyanides, mercuries, phosphoruses, so on and so forth, even those proprietary chemicals that we can't see the exact makeup of it. So, there's, besides the hills, besides how sand performs in snow for me, what it does, believe me, sand is not my biggest fan. It's a pain in my rear end, but it lets me have a means to an end. And we are as cautious as we possibly can be with the materials we put out in regards to not only traveling public, but everybody else that lives in the town, in our streams, and so on and so forth.
Mr. Chair?
Which is why I'm withdrawing my motion.
All of us, Bob, thank you. Every, every time you educate us on this, it's, it's helpful and it's clear, I'm pretty sure it's clear to all of us that you've put a lot of thought into this, so thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
You have another motion, Cynthia?
Yeah, okay, so, this is going to make some people angry, but, you know, hey, that's life, it's all about conversation. So, I want to make a motion to reduce the capital non-recurring by one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and I'll tell you why. This is the kind of thing, it's all about paying down the short-term debt. I think it's really important, and I've told, I've said that many, many, many times. I just feel that the rate, it doesn't have to be at a breakneck speed, and I think that people, I'm not wrong with letting people adjust to it, and because we are getting a little bit of a, you know, windfall, if you will, and also because, this is what I don't understand, because I was thinking about this, that, you know, I have the first lep, and I read a lot of, all the stuff on Facebook, and he's saying that you can't apply private sector, corporate policies to government agencies. But on the other hand, we have the chairman who is, says in one video I heard him say, well, people who know what they're doing, people who do what I do, they, you know, they, you know, they have this saying about, in the pigs, the pigs get fat, whatever, but anyway.
Plump.
Plump, and the hogs get slaughtered, you know, so, so don't get too greedy. I guess that's the thing, just greedy enough. It's had a little animal, animal farm to me. But the point I'm trying to make is that, I, this seems more like a corporate policy and, and not necessarily, it's a good, it is a good thing, but not necessarily the way to go while we are in this situation. The other thing I want to say is, when you were, when the chair said that, they said, he said, um, he said, he said, especially now, we shouldn't be greedy because in these, you know, these, these, these economic times. But then before, when you were endorsing the paydown for the short-term debt, you said, we should do this especially now, especially because we're in such a good economic climate. So, I'm a little confused, but I just think that it's not, it's not the end of the world. We have other things that are really more serious, and so that's my motion. I don't think you can...
I'd like to add...
Well, let's see, seconded.
Oh, discussion.
So, Cynthia, paying down the short-term debt, I think we all agree is a good thing, but the other part of this, which I think you failed to mention, is that we said, instead of increasing our short-term debt, we would start paying cash for items. The way we pay cash for items is out, is out of the CNR account. So, the items that we've talked about before, that we moved from the capital list to the CNR includes a medium-duty truck for a hundred and fourteen thousand, a class eight truck for two oh five, tire maintenance for repairs, seventy-five thousand portable radios, about forty-seven thousand items for stony hill fire, including mask and radio, a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred, event track for thirty thousand, playground equipment for thirty-three thousand dollars roughly, tractor surface for one sit, one twenty-five. The total there is seven thirty-six, seven thirty-one.
I'm aware of the list, I'm aware of what's on the list.
So, so of those items, which we said we were gonna pay cash for, are there specific items, would you suggest that we don't pay, pay cash for?
No, because I don't think that that would be necessary, because we can pay cash. I think that Brian had a conversation with the controller and...
Well, I, I don't, I don't want to, Bob never, I'm just gonna be fair to Bob Kizlowski, he never suggested borrowing this account.
No, no, he said, no.
I don't want to...
No, no.
Bob never suggested that to me.
But you had a conversation about what the impact would be.
Right, I, I just, I like speaking with facts. I, I like knowing numbers, but believe it or not, I enjoy numbers, all right? I do it every day. So, you know, historically, we generally transfer anywhere from four hundred to six hundred thousand on any given year into the general fund at the end of the year, okay? So, with that being said, I think it's safe to say this year, at a minimum, we're gonna have four hundred thousand. I would say most likely, it's gonna be more than that. So, this cut to the CNR account could be covered by that. And yes, you're still gonna carry a hundred and fifty thousand into next year. Right now, the APR on short-term bands is about roughly two percent. Two percent on a hundred and fifty thousand comes out to three thousand dollars. That's what we're talking about interest. Now, Bob, I know you have degrees in finance, and you could probably tell me I'm off by a thousand or whatever, and I'll respectfully yield if you're telling me the actual number's four thousand, forty-eight hundred, whatever it is. But my point is, is we're not talking about the end of the earth, and I think this motion brings us close to a budget that probably has a much better chance of passing. And that's my personal feelings on it. And again, you know, we've had some very spirited discussions, to say the least. Hopefully, whatever happens at the end of tonight and going into the future, we maintain a positive outlook and keep doing what we think is best for Bethel. Chairman Manfred is very convinced that his plan is right. I'm convinced that we're on the right track. No one's disagreeing on paying down short-term debt. With me, it's just at the rate. So, you know, we've all stated our opinions, and I don't want to cut anyone off. I'm pretty sure I know the way this vote's gonna go tonight, I mean, so, you know...
Brian, I, I just want to, I want to respond.
No, I mean, I...
No, in a positive way. Look, I tell folks, there's one thing for several, that all seven of us agree with every time, and that is our passion for Bethel. And I have no doubt that we all have what is best for Bethel in mind. I also am very data-driven, and that number's just not right. That's four hundred to six hundred thousand a year. And look, you don't have to believe me, I've got...
I just took it from Bob. I'm just being honest with the controller.
I'm looking at the...
You're trying to hide it.
Right, well, look, I, again, I, it's a financial statement. It's the town of Bethel financial statement for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. And again, you don't have to believe me, I think we do have to believe the certified, audited financial statements. And what this statement shows is not four to six hundred thousand being transferred to fund balance each year. Last year, it was two hundred seventy-one thousand, seven eleven. That's right out of the...
But did we use any money that could have been transferred for other things? That's, that's, that's the question.
There's, all I'm saying, it's not, when, when I hear in the public that they're usually bad fact, I worry about that.
But is it bad fact?
So, if we change the fact, if there's probably...
Please let me finish.
Okay.
What we, what we transferred was two seventy-one, and, and thankfully, we did that because, again, the rating agencies require a certain fund balance to maintain our rating.
You have over ninety million dollars in fund balance.
So that when we increase our spending, we have to increase the fund balance as well. And that number of two seventy-one, thank God, is it just covered the...
Did we use any money for anything else that could have been transferred into the fund balance?
Yes, let me finish the second part.
Okay.
I know, you just, I think when people focus on interest expense, it is kind of just one feature. It's unfortunate, it doesn't see both sides, right? It's the balancing of a checkbook. What we did, to Claudia's point, what we were able to do, right? And we, we have a three-year plan for paying off short-term debt. This board, when it got together, the non-project short-term debt was ten point five million dollars, and there was no plan to pay it off. We put in place a three-year plan. This current fiscal year is the first year of that plan, and by paying off the short-term debt we did, we saved five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in this budget.
I thought last year was the first year, because that was when you, you raised the...
And this is fiscal year twenty, so this is the year that begins July first.
All right, but let's, let's talk again to my point on the hundred and twenty, right? And I listened to your number, two seventy. Now, I've been on the board of finance for a while, too. I know that there was more money than the two seventy at the end of the year that we used for other items. So, I really don't think I'm giving anything that's unfactual, we're just talking about it in different ways. it in different ways. At the end of the year, if you would prefer me to say that we could have anywhere from four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars of discretionary money, whether we choose to transfer that into our general fund, whether we decide to pay down short-term debt with it, whether we just, we determine that we want to pay for items with cash, what I'm saying is historically, it has been four hundred to six hundred thousand. And that's, maybe I should say historically since I've been on the Board of Finance, I'm not gonna go back to two thousand.
It wasn't last year, so that's the.
What was the total, but what was the total number we had? We didn't just have two hundred and seventy thousand, I'm asking, what was the total number?
Two seventy-one was transferred into the capital.
What was the total discretionary money? Was there any money left over that we used for other items?
It would have been, if we didn't make year-end transfers, our fund balance would have been in a deficit if we didn't do it. We did take two million dollars to pay off short-term debt, and that's where we saved seven, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That was a great move by this board to save the Town of Bethel in this budget, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That message, that is the real benefit of paying down short-term debt. The secondary benefit of interest expense avoidance, that's beneficial, too, right? And this is not corporate. This is what we do in the conducting of our personal lives every day. We should, we prefer to pay cash and not rack up interest charges on a credit card. I used to work for a credit card company, right? And they would tell you, don't pay off the balance, there's no need to pay off the balance, pay the minimum amount, it's better. What they didn't tell you was, it's better for us, the company.
The one saying to pay the minimum amount.
So we're the three-year plan, it's not aggressive, it's methodical, it puts, it's only aggressive in comparison to the.
It seems somewhat inflexible, actually.
What I, what I'm gonna say is, Bob, I, I respectfully state that my number of four hundred to six hundred thousand is accurate, we are just splitting hairs on what we transferred into the general fund and what we used for other things.
I'm, I, I'm not splitting hairs, I ain't quoting.
You're saying what we, you're saying what we transferred into the general fund, did we have any money left over other than the two hundred and seventy thousand that we used anyplace else?
Did we ask that, um, okay?
Not other than what?
Paying off short-term.
How much was left over that we used for short-term debt?
Two million dollars and paid off. And that yielded five hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
I rest my case.
That is a.
Brady, I rest my case.
All right, then I'll call the question.
The chairman could ask me a question.
I have one more thing.
The chairman could ask me a question.
There's a motion on the floor to call a question.
I, I, someone can second it, but I'm gonna have one more.
I, I thirded.
Okay.
I thirded, let's call the question.
Okay, call it.
I lost the motion, what is it?
It's a motion to call a question.
All right, for that, all in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those not big. And then the motion on the table?
Yes, you have to vote on the motion on the table, which Cynthia's.
Can you repeat the motion?
To reduce the capital non-recurring by a hundred and twenty thousand.
Some capital non-recurring by a hundred and twenty.
Yeah. The four twenty department, three seventy account. Okay, we have a motion, we have a seconded, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
He's so lonely over time.
Okay. Cynthia, any other motions?
No.
Brian?
I'm good, thank you.
Good to go.
So I take it we now have to make some motions on the total spread? Yes.
What about Wendy, did Wendy talk to us?
Oh, it's about Wendy, sorry. She was so busy seconding all the motions.
I have a headache, I apologize. No, I, I'm in that, reduce the debt, pay cash, and I believe that will save everybody in the long run. Save taxes, save interest. And I think that's the direction that we need to go, stick with it. So is it the town budget now, was the twenty-six million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and ten?
Yes, but you, yeah, that's what I'm at, and then the total.
Right. So I would make a motion to send to the reconvene town meeting, town budget of twenty-six million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars.
Second? We have a motion, we have a second discussion.
Can, can you tell me what the percentage increase is now?
Four point three six.
Four point three six.
On that one line.
Yeah, just on the town.
Is it, did it affect the mill rate at all, Brad?
Yes.
Yes. The, if all the four votes on the, without making any other changes, the estimated mill rate would be thirty-three point four one.
Brad, I'm sorry, that's with all of the most, all of the changes in?
Correct.
Okay, can we go through all the changes first and then come back to the total?
I just wanted to.
Yeah, fair enough. So, so we have a motion for.
Twenty-six million.
Town operating budget. Town operating budget, twenty-six million, one ninety-one, nine ten, seconded discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passes five feet.
And then the next order of business would be the.
Board of Maintenance.
Well, the Board of, okay, the Board of, I'd make a motion to fund the Board of Education Maintenance account in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, did we hear a second?
Yep.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion.
Was that added to the agenda or maybe I missed something?
What?
My question is, is, so we're taking that out of the overall town, or isn't that normally? Like, when we talked about the four point nine eight percent last time, wasn't the four sixty account included in there?
No. I can, I can give you the total town with, with debt and four, four sixty when you're done, but no, that, the, the first motion was just on the town alone.
No, I understand, I'm saying, last time we talked about the four point nine eight percent increase that we talked about in the town budget before we went to referenda, was the four sixty included in that?
Yeah. Yes, that was the total town including the word of that.
And debt?
Yes.
All four accounts.
Okay.
For all four categories.
Yeah, I forgot we have to vote on this separately.
So you made a motion for fifty.
Forty-six.
Claudia seconded discussion. Not hearing any discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Now, do we have to vote on the debt service reduction, too?
We have to do debt service, Brad, can you give us some quick math?
Well, the debt service is now four million, nine thirty-four, one thirty-three. You already voted on it, though, so I don't really think you need to vote on it.
We did, yeah, that's correct.
We voted on that one.
So you just need the total town, which includes the town operating budget, debt service, and Board of Ed Maintenance.
And that number is?
Thirty-one million, five, seven, six, zero, four, three. So thirty-one, five, seven, six, zero, four, three.
I would make that as a motion.
Second? Second. Discussion?
Brad, do the percent increase and mill rate stay with that total?
Well, you asked, what percentage increase do you want, the mill rate increase or the town as a whole?
I want the tax increase and then the actual mill rate.
I have one, one point six five. So, yeah, the increased percentage in the mill rate would be one point six five, one point six five percent, and the estimated mill rate would be thirty-three point four one.
Thank you.
It had been thirty-three point six prior to this meeting.
And what's the overall increase in spending?
I, I have four point four seven.
Yeah, four point four seven as a percentage.
And Brad, just, just to be completely clear, I'm sure everyone else is already there on the slow income, that's across those three accounts.
Then, that's across the board, including the school.
That includes school.
Total town budget.
Yeah, total, total.
Everything, got it.
Total to the taxpayers.
So one point six five percent increase in taxes.
Correct.
But what, what is the spending increase on just the towns, on the three accounts that go into town?
I, I don't have that one. Yeah, well, it's two million, thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and two dollars, or six point nine percent. And that includes the debt service, which is up twenty-five percent.
So, Bob, next year, when the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar windfall?
Two eighty-five.
How much?
Two eighty-five.
Two eighty-five. Yeah, but we, I thought we said we only did two, we did two eighty-five, not two seven, two eighty-five, it was two eighty-seven, right?
It's two eighty-seven.
So next year, in next year's budget, when that two hundred and eighty-five isn't there, does it get plugged back in?
Fiscal year twenty-one.
Fiscal year, so this will get plugged back in, the two hundred, this is a one-time.
Yeah, you would, you would go back to the six fifty in principal payments again for the short-term debt.
Well, only, only if we don't stick to our plan.
Exactly.
If we stick to our plan, it'll stay up. We'll have, like this year, we have a five hundred and seventy thousand dollar reduction in debt service because of our addressing short-term debt, we'll have that same beneficial impact in fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
The only difference, though, you gotta remember, you got the schools coming on.
Right.
We have ten million out there now, we have to borrow probably another twenty million, that's six hundred thousand in interest.
Absolutely, but when we talk about short-term debt.
It's not those items.
Exactly, it's the ten point five that we're looking to get off, uh, get retired, the credit card balance, not, not expenses that are part of investment like the police stations. Alright, so are we good on the budget itself?
Didn't you, did you do the total on thirty-one million?
They didn't go around, it was seconded.
No, it was seconded.
Okay. So we have a motion, and it's been seconded, a total of thirty-one million, five, seventy-six, zero, forty-three?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I'm sorry, just Cynthia or Cynthia?
Me, I, I'm opposed.
Okay. Cynthia and Brad.
Sorry.
So passes five feet. Can we have the total town budget now and what?
You don't need to vote on it.
You don't need to vote on it. Because you have a friend already passed.
The total town budget would be seventy-seven million, nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and sixteen.
Five hundred and sixteen?
Yes.
And Brad, will you, you'll update for us and send to us this, the schedule, the four-part schedule that we all choose? Alright, I believe that leaves us with just setting the next town meeting. Yep? Alright, motion on the floor.
Sorry, I just made a random question.
We're good, yeah, got it? Alright, I'd like to make a motion that we reconvene the town meeting on April twenty-fourth, a Wednesday, I believe.
Second? We have to list the time and the location.
Seven PM, municipal center, multipurpose room.
Does that all have to be seconded?
Yeah.
Second? Alright, all those in favor of the resetting of the town meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna say no.
Alright, passes. Anybody want to suggest a motion for adjournment?